Row call please, John.
Yes. President.
This one. Here.
Vice President Ramona.
Here.
Mr. Sheehan.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Moen Patel. Mr. Brawl Patel. Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Barra.
Present.
Mr. Bishaw Patel. We have a call.
Thank you. Opening statement?
Yes. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, C231 Sunshine Law, copies of the public meeting notice were sent to the Home District Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 3rd, 2023. Members of the public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws of the board and applicable state regulations.
Thank you. Now we have a presentation, Ms. Gail Polaski, for middle school schedules.
Good evening, everyone. Two quick updates for secondary. One, the middle school schedule changed. This is something we're really excited about. Last year, due to certain circumstances, we realized that we may lose some programs. And in order to prevent that, we changed our schedule from an A/B schedule to a semester schedule. And with that schedule, we knew there were some concerns, particularly with the music program and the world language program. And this year, we went out, we looked at what other schools were doing, looked at other programs, other schedules, and came up with this very exciting eight-period day. Right now, there's a seven-period day, so we are adding a period, which makes the classes 42 minutes, which is equal to the high school amount of time for a class. And with that comes the next three opportunities. All students, all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders will be in a music class for the full year. They will have more music instruction than they ever have before in the middle school. In addition, the world language, the way we have our schedule now, students who have one period of English get a full year of world language. Everyone else gets a semester. But with the new schedule, every seventh and eighth grader will have a full year of world language, which is developing that program as well and is more comparable to a lot of the programs around us. We're allowed, we are able to offer the music because we have the staff and we have the room. And with world language, we have the room, and we will be increasing the staff just slightly. And what that allows for also for our students is to have this period, which we are calling WIN, what I need from a student's perspective. And they will have time to, one could just be as simple as have time to do homework, or at least to start their homework. With many of our students involved in after-school programs, programs at night that aren't even involved with school, whether it's scouts, CCD, whatever the case may be, religious studies, it's difficult for them to always complete their homework. So they could start their homework. Also, we have academic support. And the irony is when we support students because of the schedule, very often we pull them out of class in order to give them extra support. This period will allow us to work with those students during that open period as opposed to pulling them out. The same thing with counseling. You know, we certainly want to support our students socially and emotionally. And a lot of times, the counselors run group sessions, individual sessions, and have to pull them from class. This will allow them to do that during this WIN period. They'll be, even when students do start their homework, sometimes they like to know that the teacher's still there instead of at home when they don't have an answer. They'll be able to work with other students to make sure that they have the support. The Woodrow Wilson Wingman program is pulled from academics, will now be able to come out of the WIN period. There could be mentoring out of the WIN period. So we see a lot of potential. We're going to look to grow this with Genius Hour and a lot of other programs. So we're very excited about that change. Another change that we have for the high school, it's just, it's not an additional class, it's changing the order of the class. Students usually take biology, chemistry, then physics, and then they have a choice of AP classes. And the AP physics, you do not need a physics class before AP. So it was offered as a junior class. And junior year, there are a lot of opportunities for students to take AP classes, and not as many in the 10th grade. So by allowing students the choice, they will have the choice to keep the schedule the way they pattern, the way they had, biology, chemistry, AP physics, and then choose another AP, or they can have biology and then go directly to AP physics, then do chemistry. The benefit there is, again, start with an AP class when you're not bombarded with too many AP classes, so gives you one less in the junior year. It also allows for students that choose AP chemistry. College Board tells us that you need a year of chemistry before you actually go into the AP chemistry class because it's so difficult. So the way we have our pattern now is you have chemistry, then you go to physics, whether it's AP or not, and then you can choose AP physics, chemistry, sorry. This way, the sequence could easily be that chemistry is immediately followed by AP chemistry, which makes sense. So this will be an option for the students. They can choose whichever they have a preference for. And that's it. That's the presentation.
Thank you, Gail.
Good talk, yeah.
I know it's only one page, but it's actually a lot of work behind the scene, and you guys, you know, ironing out all the details. Really appreciate it. Any questions from the board?
I just want to make a comment. Gail and your team, I appreciate it. I know we've been talking about this for months. And I'm really glad that you guys were able to pull it off. Kudos to you and your team. And thank you for thinking of the best interest of our kids. And thank you for your hard work. Truly appreciate it.
I do also want to thank the curriculum committee, who have the persistence to continue. I know we have a lot of concerns last year since A/B schedule was removed. Many parents have expressed their concern, also the board member. But so this committee and this board is actually determined to restore the A/B schedule. And now we have this. And this is not only restored it, it's much better, actually. The instruction for language and music are actually doubled for our students. I think this is a great gain for our students. I think this has actually set a new milestone for our middle school program because now with this extra period, you know, there's so much things, open up so many opportunities. Students can do homework, prepare for their test, you know, maybe even select another electives. We can have public speaking, we can have creative writing, we can have robotics. You know, this is, there's just so many opportunities up there. So kudos to our committee and our administration, especially Dr. Adarali, Ms. Polaski, and Ms. Bahia, Bahia, who's not here, actually.
She's there.
Oh, there.
She's hiding.
You're hiding behind.
Hiding behind.
Really appreciate your support, your hard work, and the committee. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
I overheard you, and I meant to ask it. You were talking about the world language. How many staff members are we going to need? Because I know when I did an AP, a period date in where I'm at, you're absolutely right. Like, you need a certain amount of world language to cover up those three periods. So how many world language teachers do we have now currently, and how many will we need to?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, please.
You sat down too early.
Yes, I'm sorry. I walked past them.
So interestingly, we don't need as many as one would think because with the way the schedule worked, we weren't, it depended on the grade level, and they had to be on teams. And actually, some of the classes were very large and some were small. And by changing the schedule, we actually can better schedule the students so that we don't need to add for the eighth grade. We can use the same amount of teachers for the semester seventh grade and all of eighth grade. We don't have to hire. But because we want to add the seventh grade for every student, it'll be one and a half teachers per school. So the four middle schools each get a Spanish teacher and a half a French teacher.
So we're talking about looking for about five, six people?
Six, mhm. And we're already recruiting, and we already found some great candidates.
Awesome. That's what I want to hear. Thank you very much.
Okay, welcome.
Board President?
Sure.
I just wanted to echo everybody's comments. And I don't think I have a question for Ms. Polkowski, so she doesn't have to stay. This eight-period day is a great solution. I think it's going to really benefit the students. And as a parent of middle schoolers and that take an instrument, I can relate to the need for more music. And the transition from A/B to what we did last year to this is just a really great progression. And it shows a progressive, you know, intent with this district to be better. So, thank you.
Madam President?
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Sheehan.
So, you know, Brian, just to follow up on what you said, as you can see, the world language is only seventh, eighth grade. We didn't go to sixth grade, right? So the plan is that we'll continue to expand this to make sure that down the road, we can do sixth grade as well. So that's a plan. But yeah, because there are some staff limits, you know, staff numbers, we cannot go to sixth grade right now. But the plan is to go to sixth grade as well.
Yeah, because when you do scheduling, when you're doing scheduling, you're actually looking at teacher preps and lunches. That's what drives your scheduling. So that's why I wanted to make sure we have enough specials teachers to actually do this. That's why I asked how many we would need to hire. Because if you looked in the past couple of months or so, we've been hiring language teachers for some exorbitant prices, and some people were asking why. They're not easy to find. So that's why I asked, how many do we actually need? Because it's going to be difficult to find those individuals. So, Gail, another task. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we go to resolutions, board discussion, board member discussion. Any comments on the resolution?
Are you going to go through them first, or?
Yeah, why don't you go through them first?
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, hope all is well. It's great to start a board meeting with a little bit of light out, right? So hopefully, everybody's adjusted to daylight savings currently right now. But I'd like to begin, prior to talking about the resolutions, about two things that I had the opportunity to celebrate this month. Number one, it's March is Youth Art Month. Again, I think I said it at the last board meeting, too. I believe that in Edison Township, we celebrate the arts every day and every month because we have such unbelievable and robust programs. But this month especially, we're able to showcase the talents of our students, the programs, and the hard work that our teachers put in each and every day to make them so successful. So I want to congratulate all of our arts teachers, as well as our art students and the administrators that support those programs as well. I do believe that we will be showing a video at the beginning of the next Board of Education meeting, a little culmination of the arts as people are coming in. So if you get to the meeting a little bit early, you'll be able to see that up on the screen over at JP Stevens. The other great thing that happened to me this week is the superintendent is getting into classrooms and schools, seeing teachers. Our Read Across America celebrations in the elementary schools were the highlight of my day. Getting the opportunity to read to, you know, grade levels from kindergarten through fifth were fantastic. It's amazing that fifth graders will still get on a carpet and listen to, you know, a superintendent read, you know, a book that's tailored to second and third grade, which I thought was great. And they were really interesting. And you could tell by the organization of each of the events that this process is valued in all of our elementary schools. So I want to congratulate all the building principals, as well as, I believe, the reading specialist, Ms. Mahabir, you know, for just a wonderful month of school. And I think that many of the board members hopefully have the opportunity to participate in that. And that's my piece before we get into the resolutions. So moving through, our first resolution begins with our National Autism Awareness Month resolution. Our second one deals with the approval of the 2023-2024 Much-Awaited Calendar. The next is the approval of our testing schedules for both NJSLA as well as NJPGA. We have the approval of our Matouchin and Lacrosse sports program, which keeps that partnership and program alive. So we continue to have the opportunities to build a lacrosse program here in Edison Township. And we're very, not only proud of that, but we'd also like to thank our athletic directors for being creative and thinking outside the box. And also, this body and this Board of Education for supporting that through the members of the Athletic Committee. Greatly appreciated. We have our policy resolutions. Our first policy resolution is basically warranted and provides us with the opportunity to apply for funds through sustainability grants. The second one, our mandatory policy resolutions, they're the second readings. They were on a previous board agenda, many of which are mandated based on statute and code. Our next resolution, we move into our curriculum report. Much of the things that you've seen on the agenda, month after month, it's our approval of our professional development report, providing our staff opportunities to enrich themselves professionally, learning opportunities. Wonderful that this Board of Education supports those. And, you know, our teachers are hungry for that. So I thank you for that. And last but not least, we have our pupil services report, which talks, which deals with our out-of-district placements. And Madam President, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. That's business administration report, right?
Yes. We have the approval of the minutes, then our traditional finance resolutions. Item one is the financial reports. Two, three, four, and five are all acceptance and submission and amendment of grants. Six is the use of competitive contracting for health broker and risk manager. Seven is the approval of a contract with DMR. Eight, nine is the use of cooperative bidding for access control and doors. Ten is a project application for a construction project. Eleven is the use of cooperative purchasing for transportation, which is rather long. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen are all non-public programs. Item sixteen is the transportation bus runs. And last is the transportation report. That's it for me.
Thank you. Any comments, board members, questions, discussions?
Madam President?
Mr. Sheehan.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Can you expand a little bit about the preliminary budget?
Yeah, sure. So if, let me just flip back here. The preliminary budget for FY24 is a total budget of $346,59,922, which is an increase of approximately $50 million over last year. However, the taxable portion of that, meaning the school tax levy portion, tax local property tax owners, is $235,013,00168, which is exactly the same as last year, which is zero. Everybody likes zero. And the same as the previous year. I think that might be our record. But it's a wonderful thing. We've actually increased our budget by approximately $50 million with the use of, and everyone heard about it before even me, the $25 million extra in state aid. We're using about $6.1 million in fund balance that we realized in savings in FY22. And we're using about $20 million in capital reserve funds, all for capital projects and growing programs and, you know, covering health costs and, you know, obviously staffing. We're hearing about needing some teachers. But this budget allocates approximately about $47 to $48 million for capital projects aligned with the infrastructure improvements that were in Phase One. I think that was at the committee meeting of the whole in May 23rd. So now we're going to see a lot of action on these projects. I mean, I think it's very exciting. And we're also going to take care of some general capital maintenance needs as requested by our principals out at the buildings and discuss with our finance committee. So I think we're accomplishing a lot without, you know, taxing to do it. We're getting our facilities upgraded. We're getting staffing done. And we're doing it, you know, I guess in the most efficient way possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Board President, I have some, I have some questions, if you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
On the DMR resolution, on the last line item there, it says feasibility study. All of the other line items there, they note what school that is for. What is that $100,000 feasibility study for?
John, do you know?
Yes, I do. So the feasibility study, what that is, is when we have committee meetings and we need to explore other options or other changes in either scope or new projects, whether it be looking at bathrooms in certain schools, or whether it be looking at a courtyard in terms of before we put down, you know, turf or something like that, for them to do a schematic or engineering or civil work on the ground, that covers those type of requested items.
So I think I understand it, but I'll just repeat it for the minutes and for the public. But when you put $100,000 there, that's kind of like a blanket PO at that point, where if they do some hourly work, which were contracted with DMR to, I don't know what their hourly rate is, but let's say it's $180 an hour, $200 an hour.
That's pretty close.
Whatever it is. I knew I was close. But so when they do that work, because someone asks, hey, we want you to study the renovation of these bathrooms, now you're able to, the mechanism is in place for you to pay them, if we now vote for that kind of allocation, that pot of money, that $100,000, is that correct?
Right. I would say that's accurate. Suppose, like, you know, we get, at the time of building the budget, you have, you know, building principals, that's the advocate for each building, and putting through requests for, you know, some smaller, you know, not multimillion-dollar projects. But they're putting through requests for things that sometimes we need to investigate with an architect. So we utilize the architect for those type of things, like, you know, to see, you know, what the feasibility is.
So does the, the building principal doesn't talk to the architect, though?
No.
So who's the person who talks to the architect that can take that $100,000 amount and dwindle that down to?
Right. So that would be, usually it's done with, like, through the committee level. They would have the architect come in, meet with the committee, committee chair, you get the board president, superintendent, myself, buildings. I was about to say, Mr. Colaboss.
So the committee can direct the architect to do something?
No.
No.
So who directs the architect to do something?
Superintendent.
Only the superintendent, right?
Correct.
Cool. Let me ask you this. The timeline for the, for the projects, we're out to bid for Herbert Hoover, correct?
Correct, yes.
That's a done deal. What's the next? Is the board prepared to share, like, what the next timeline is? Because it's applicable to this resolution that we're, Board President, I would address this.
I could give a little feedback, yeah. I mean, Hoover's not even, I mean, when I said about $48 to $49, $50 million, Hoover's not even in next year's budget because it's in money we're utilizing now. So that's already out on the street. We're going to make an award. But in terms of stuff that we're going to be bidding, and I think this was some preliminary conversations we had with the Finance and Facilities Committee, we're looking at Woodrow Wilson Gym, we're looking at the John Adams Middle School Gym, we're looking at TJ Gym Offices and Front Entrance, we're looking at JPS Cafeteria, the regular cafeteria, renovation to that, the JPS Auditorium, the JPS Classroom, and a middle school locker renovation. So I think that's pretty much everything, you know?
With the exception of the locker rooms, which, by the way, is a great idea, whoever came up with that. Otherwise, that aligns with our Phase One plan, correct?
Correct.
So the speed at which this is happening is, is there anything slowing us down right now?
Getting back full DOE, will we go with DOE approvals?
We're waiting on a couple.
We're waiting on a couple. But we, you know, we're thinking, you know, early summer, we're out on the street and awarding contracts.
So you want, I can give you the full timeline. So TJ is coming back probably this month, by the end of this month. So we'll be bit ready next month. Herbert Hoover is out, we're going to be ready to award the contract next month. JP Stevens, because, oh, I'm sorry, the Adams and Woodrow, we already got the initial approval. But there are another four to six weeks before it's bit ready. Okay? So it's already one week past, so probably another five to six, five, three to four, five weeks, they'll be bit ready for the two schools. We're bidding same time. JP Stevens was submitted this year. We're anticipating approval in May timeframe. We'll be bit ready somewhere in June. Okay? The, John mentioned about the locker room expansions. That should be done before the summer. It's a much smaller scale. And the JP Stevens Cafeteria, it's a regular update. It's just changing some interior stuff. That's done in the summer. We don't even need a bid or maybe just use the co-op, whatever. As far as the other item, which is the auditorium, they're still working on it. We're hoping that, you know, can be done before the fall. That's all the things that's over there.
You just shared a lot of very good news. So that's good. Thank you.
Can I?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
John Adams and Woodrow Wilson, the reason they're coming together real close is that we would like to try, and we've talked to the architects, to try to get both schools, all the product that we need ordered together. This way, it's a little bit cheaper. I mean, we can get the product for both schools all at once, and it'll make it a little bit cheaper at the end. So we're moving forward on it, you know? Just, let's keep going forward.
It's great. And then?
Madam President, can I ask something?
Sure.
So we all, if you all recall, last meeting, we approved probably 14 items through ROD grants, right? So if we got approved for any of the ROD grants, the ROD grants will cover 40% of the cost. So that, we will not know until May. Hope that JP, you know, they will approve for ROD grants. So that's something that you see that, how much the architect fee is for the ROD grants, it's on the agenda. And, you know, so let's hope we don't have to pay everything, which gets some grants.
Through the chair, Mr. Sheehan. So those grants, let's just say, for example, we start going and we do a project, and then the grants come later. Can we get it reimbursed? Or you have to wait for them to grant this money to you before you even start a project?
You want to answer?
Yeah, I can answer that. So if we start the project, no matter what, you're awarded a ROD grant, you have to have capital upfront, and then you get reimbursed.
Got it. Okay.
As you go in the project. There's different phases where you get reimbursed.
And I think my last question, Board President, the JP Stevens Athletic Field, what is, what is that?
I think we're looking to expand it.
I believe the JPS field, this is the?
You talking about football field, or?
It says Athletic Field.
This is the, the field that?
The ongoing.
The ongoing projects.
Oh, this is a baseball field.
Right. We're memorializing the proposal that DMR gave us.
Got it.
That's what we're doing.
Well, I just want to commend, you know, Mr. Toth, I'm putting this together. In the past, we don't know these stuff. It's all just one bucket of things, you know, which school, which school. Okay? This is itemized. And you'll see, say, hey, JP Stevens got a million dollars, but this million dollars is not paid in one shot.
Correct.
There's a schedule that's going to come. Based on whatever they do, we pay them. So majority of the payment, you see them, they're not happening right away when we bid it. It's probably more towards the end. So there will be a schedule from these architects. Based on what they do, we pay them. So this is very transparent for this board, and I really appreciate for doing this. In the past, we don't see this.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Toth.
I do want to say, like, I really wish that JP was, JP's plan, expansion plan was submitted last year, because now we have to wait how long? Maybe until the end of May to get it approved?
Yeah, end of May is anticipated.
And JP is the only one out of all these expansions that has classroom addition. And that would, that's what we really need at JP, because a lot of courses are not even, we're not able to open them because we're lack of classroom, shortage of classroom. So this is what really help our students. I wish it could be submitted earlier and approved, you know, earlier this year, then it could go along with all the other schools, like Herbert Hoover and TJ.
Also, just to piggyback on a lot of things we're talking about, we actually talked about constructing consultants to make sure that the plans are moving forward. So we know that there's people that, we know there's bricklayers, we know there's foundation people. We know there's people that erect a steel. And we want to make sure that the project moves along. We don't, we really wouldn't like to have a project and then stop because of unforeseen circumstances. That's why we would like to take, we would like to take and have project managers on site to make sure that things go according to plan. So it makes things go faster. It makes things go more efficiently. And to be perfectly honest, we need, we need people on the ground to take and make sure this stuff works. And I'm quite sure it's working. I've seen where it's working now. And I did argue with you, Doug, about, about the gyms. And yeah, I did argue with you about it. But we need the gyms first, and the classrooms at JP, and then classrooms at other schools, too. So right now, if you look at the dollars and cents and the amount of money that we're spending, and how much money and how much money we could spend in two thousand and twenty-four, and then how much money we could spend in two thousand and twenty-five, you'll see, as you as you look at this, you'll see where the money, how it's laid out. And I think I think it's, I'm almost positive it's going to work with all of the people that we got working together, hand in hand, to take and make these projects go smoothly. And the gyms, yes. The classrooms, without a doubt. And you're right, there are other schools and there are other, but we have to start somewhere. And because we had a good plan from before, from last year, and that plan did take and say, the gyms, we jumped on it, we used that plan, so we're going after the gyms first, then we're going to go after TJ, and then we're, I mean, excuse me, JP Stevens, then we're going to go after Edison High. And we just need cooperation so we can move things forward. That's all I need.
Great, thank you.
Agree. Yeah, I I think whether it's gym or classroom, different priorities.
We, I remember, a gym is a classroom.
Yeah, well, let's not argue about the semantics. I think we all know that, you know, gym is called gym for a reason. It's not, you know, but.
It's like calling a gym teacher a gym teacher, they're physical education teachers in a classroom in a gym.
For, okay, for us to distinguish classroom versus gym, but let's just call it that way. But I guess different people have different priorities. Some people prioritize gym, some prioritize classroom, and I think whether either way, as long as our students get the benefit, I'm okay with it, you know.
No, I'm I'm fine with it, but I just know physical education teachers find it offensively if you call them gym teachers, and you're not recognizing that the gym is actually a classroom. That's all I'm saying.
I don't think we're not recognizing it's a classroom, but we're saying like, it's a gym expansion because it's a gym expansion.
We're good.
We're not calling it a classroom expansion because that would confuse people, like, when you say classroom expansion, they're going to think it's a classical, the old way classroom expansion. That's why it's called gym expansion on our expansion plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have some questions, though, regarding the resolutions, if they're still open. So I s- I have a question with the, I remember Dr. Bregan was here, we discussed this, we made sure that the architects, there was equity in projects, so this is just, because I thought Woodrow Wilson was done by USA Architects, because I was just curious why DMR is doing the locker rooms for that. Also, with the project feasibility study for DMR, is USA Architects getting the same advantages or the same treatment or respect or equity, whatever word you want to use for that? To me, if it looks like, to me, I would approve both architects for the same things, because here it looks like we're just choosing a specific architect, and it almost feels like we're not being fair. So that's the reason why I brought that up. So did anybody reach out to USA Architects and have the same conversation? If so, why isn't it on the resolution?
Madam President?
Yeah.
John, you want to?
I mean, I I I have reached out to USA, just for some documentation, the proposals, whatever was submitted on the work that they're currently doing. I've yet to get to hear back from them, so, you know, hopefully, once I get that stuff and I can have further conversations with them, you know, we can discuss, you know, future projects along with the stuff that they currently have, so I can make sure that all all the projects they're going to be doing are encumbered correctly and there's funding available.
All right, I just want to make sure that we're equitable for everyone.
Gotcha.
Madam President? Because you you brought this up. So USA was not designing Woodrow Wilson, okay? USA is is designing Adams, the Woodrow Wilson Gym, okay? This this locker room is separate, okay? It's a separate new project that's going on. So talking about equity. So we treat everyone the same, but they need to do the good work. I'm not going to hear, I'm not going, if you want some details about why certain things are assigned certain ways, I can talk to you behind the scene in closed session. I don't want to talk in public about, you know, what thing that's going on. So you saw these resolutions for DMR. These are the POs we have not created. We have not received anything from USA yet, as Mr. Toth said. Once we receive them, they will be here as well. So at the end of the day, I don't care which architect, which vendor it is, they work for us. They need to work for us, they need to come up with quickly, right? The John Adams and Woodrow Wilson actually are certainly approved. If things cut down quicker, we should be bit ready, and now we're waiting another four to six weeks for the for the final engineering submission. Why is that? I don't know. You know, DMR only submitted a month, one month earlier. Once it's approved, we're ready to go. And we had to wait another four to six weeks for USA.
Well, this is something I think John and Eddie need to get on, you know, as you guys represent the Board of Education.
Loaded. We'll get on it.
Okay, moving on, since we're bringing this preliminary budget, we want to hear the public comments on this resolution, the preliminary budget resolution only. Any? See, now, we're going to vote on this preliminary budget resolution.
Yeah, you got to explain why we need to vote today?
Yeah, sure, no problem. So the preliminary budget by statute is due on March twentieth, that's throughout the state of New Jersey. So we're taking action on the preliminary budget based on our very preliminary figures, I mean, zero is a great preliminary figure. I mean, it's awesome. But that being said, we will be back in, I believe, May with a budget hearing, we'll have a presentation. Hopefully, all things stay the same here, we don't make too change, too many changes. But if need be, you know, obviously, the board reserves a right to do so through the county as well.
Thank you.
And the county has approved us to do this?
Correct. So once I said, once we vote on the preliminary, I will submit it on Monday. The county will go through their review, and they will, you know, look at everything. Between now and the time of the budget hearing, if we needed to make changes, I have to go through the county, it shouldn't be a problem. But when we get it back, it'll be finalized, it'll be a county-approved budget by the county superintendent, county school BA. And then we'll have a hearing and, you know, take public comment, and we'll have a presentation, and we will hold the vote.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just a preliminary budget, it's been the practice that, you know, you send it in, you can you can modify it before the before it's final in May.
Exactly.
So, you know, because of timeline, because we're a day behind, so, you know, that's, otherwise, we would have proved down the on the, you know, the public meeting.
Correct. It would have been a little bit more challenging, you know, we we got to, we want to have the resolution, so that when I hit the button Monday, I have the resolution to go with it. But, you know, like like I said, if on Tuesday night, if we want to discuss further, I mean, that's that's totally okay.
Yeah, just before we go on vote, I just wanted for the record, you know, Mr. Toth mentioned about this, you saw a big increase on the budget. The forty-eight million dollars, forty-eight million dollars, remember that number, is for construction, okay? It's not for somebody's benefit, it's not for whatever, it's not for Joe want to go to Bora Bora.
Why is Joe always going to Bora Bora?
I'm looking for my tickets, and they didn't show up.
This is for construction. We finally putting big amount of money into construction, we're doing it. That's all I want to say, thank you.
So this money, the additional money for the construction, this is going all to Phase One?
Yes.
Yes.
That's beautiful.
I feel good about it.
And you have to understand, this was collaboration from last year and this year together.
That's awesome, I'm glad, no, I think the, we we had, as much as we may have argued in the past, I think we have a great board here that all has the same vision of helping as in public schools in the overcrowding issue. So I'm glad that we stuck with the the plan and the phases, and I'm looking forward to see what we do. Awesome.
You call it saving, the other people call it hoarding.
Okay, any public comments on this resolution, the preliminary budget? If none, oh, Van K.
I thought I'd bring this in the regular one, but from the preliminary budget perspective, one of your board member, Brian, I'm sure that he knows that he's an administrator from the Southam Bay, but he's not bringing those best practices here. I think if he wants to talk about equitability, talk about the investments that are made in the last two years. How much injustice is done to the John Adams, having the highest number of middle school kids and getting the least amount of funds?
Please, quiet, it's.
And Woodrow Wilson didn't get anything, but we didn't come, when his president has given Doug a million dollar to his principal for upgrading his room, he didn't comment on it. He brings on that equitability stupidity to this every time, but he didn't talk about EHS is getting esports, EHS grounds has been upgraded, EHS has more electives than John Adams, sorry, JP. He's not talking about it. JP has gone down from nine to seven, and EHS has moved up to six. And now in next year, you guys celebrate the equitability that, oh, we brought it both of them six. It's a shame on the board that you're bringing nine of JP down to six. So please make sure that, stop this crap of equitable, and try to help both schools bring it nine. And I worked with Ross several times and always requested that EHS should get more, even though my kid supposed to go to JP. I never differentiated. Why we are talking about this differentiation polarization of equitability? I think when the funds are coming, if it is needed, it is needed. And John Adams is needing those rooms ASAP, and it's shame on the last year's board for not giving the funds. And thanks to our superintendent for making those cameras available. I heard that they're getting ready by Monday. This is the speed at which we need to address the things. I think if you want to really bullshit for the next November elections, go ahead and do it. Don't bring Pertham by bullshit here. I think our grades are going down. Stop playing politics of the polarization, bring the best for the schools, whichever is needed. And if we are not having both schools are nine and rating better all middle schools, I think we should be ashamed, and you guys should resign from your position. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? No? Say no. Uh, roll call?
All right, can I get a motion?
Oh, motion.
Motion.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Do I have a second?
I second.
Oh, who's the first, oh.
Joe, Joe.
Sorry, Mr. Ramon.
All in favor? Do we need a roll call?
I would recommend a roll call as well, it's a little more formal. So now I'll call it all. Mr. Rochelle, oh, Mr. Rochelle, Mr. Rivera?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Shee?
Yes.
Vice President Ramona?
Yes.
President Pang?
Yes.
It's approved.
Okay.
Good job, all. Yeah.
Good job, thank you. Board member, open discussion, please. Eddie, anybody want to start?
I have to ask questions, everybody. I can't break that the tradition. So we have two small, two snow days left, so parents are asking, where are we putting it?
Bora Bora.
No, that's that's a whole week.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Shee. You know, we've been fortunate enough to have a mild winter, and I will tell you as a newly appointed superintendent, and I think our our team can attest to this, it's actually been one of the things that have kept me up at night, even when we had mild weather coming in, they would tell me, Dr. A, it's not going to snow. You don't need to stay up until three AM and monitor and monitor weather works. But listen, if all goes according to plan up until our break currently, right, currently right now, I believe it's been tradition in this district when we've utilized those snow days to attach them to the Memorial Day break, either Friday or that Tuesday. You know, we're going to monitor the weather over the course of the next week. Correspondence will come out to my office after we have a discussion with the Board of Education in closed session, as well as with the administrative team, and that's that's what we're currently thinking right now. So knock on wood, weather weather permitting, we're able to do that and extend everybody's Memorial Day. So I appreciate that.
The the, there's a suggestion, you know, I kind of know the answer, but if you can answer it, you know, we are finishing the school year on Tuesday, we have a Juneteenth, you know, right before. Is there any possibility we can move the graduation to Fridays or whatever, so we, you know, we don't have to, you know, the student has a whole week off.
Yeah, we we look, we did look at that, we are locked into our graduation dates, we do do that, you know, a year in advance, unfortunately. You know, in certain situations, when you have snow, it's not an issue because we we exhaust those days. This year, we've been fortunate enough not to have it, but we are locked into that date, the Rutgers, which we do at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, I know, yes, I just wanted you to say.
You got it, no problem, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Shee.
So there's no way, Eddie, to like talk to Rutgers and have that changed?
And move that. I can definitely give them a call, I would imagine that it would be unsuccessful.
Try to see, it'll be if we could have the last day on Friday.
If I can do it, if I can, if I can make it happen, you know, with through the powers of persuasion, we we will definitely try.
Okay, if we can look into it, yeah.
You got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, question for you. Or any of the buildings being used in June for election purposes? Because I know we had three vacation days, and we actually took a day off prior, we're not opening up the buildings, because we don't want the kids in there while people are coming in for election purposes.
They 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 definitely are. I I have to get the day, I have to get the schools, though, from Mr. Colaboss.
That might be something to consider with the snow days.
As well, Tim.
All right.
Shannon.
Oh, Ms. White, sorry.
I have just a, just a couple of, just little things, okay? We didn't do board member comments at the last meeting, and I did want to congratulate the cheerleaders, you know, JV and Boris Diyet, Edison High for doing such a great job. They were outstanding, and everybody's so proud of them. I want to say thank you to Gail and your team for that beautiful presentation, that's so good, and it's going to benefit so many of our kids, too. It's just wonderful. I did read Across America, too, and I loved every second of it. I had kindergarten and first grade the best. And we had, you know, I enjoyed every minute of it, I have to say that. And it's such a good thing, and if you do get the opportunity to do it, you know, genuinely do it, it's just, just very rewarding. And I ran across Eddie many times, you know, and each time I did this. And lastly, we had our liaison committee meeting on Tuesday, and it was outstanding. It was really, really a very, very good meeting, and we did some really nice things. But I did promise that I would mention this. The township does an internship for high school students over the summer. And please have your children, you know, have your students take advantage of it. Kat Leary is in charge of it. So just have them go and, you know, sign up for it. They shadow the, you know, different people up there, and it's very, very interesting for them. It gives them a inside look at how government is run, so. And I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, board member, if none, public comments, anyone? Sue.
Sue Campione, Edison, New Jersey, is this working? Yeah. One thing, Ginny, my son did an internship for, he actually shadowed in the fire department when he was a senior, well, going into his senior year, and it was great. He loved it, learned a lot, so it is a good program. Just a couple of of things. Was there any answer from the last meeting? There was mention, because you're saying that Woodrow is approved, and you're almost ready to go, about the soccer field? It looked like that extension was going to be on part of the soccer field, and it was going to be looked into, is there an answer about that? And also, Mrs. Pang, you mentioned after the presentation for the middle schools about adding, possibly adding new electives. Is that in the future or now? Because the portal just closed, the kids picked all their electives for next year. So are we reopening the portal if we're going to add more electives? And also, it seems like it's like a high school schedule, which is is great, but we're getting rid of team, and that was the reason that a lot of the teachers were off at the same time. With this new schedule, are the lunches going to be mixed for sixth, seventh, and eighth, and not just have a sixth grade lunch, a seventh grade lunch? And are the lunches going to be shorter? Because just a concern with getting kids in and out of the cafeterias with shorter amount of time, and and I guess the passing is going to be shortened also. So those were just some of the questions that I had.
Thank you. The USA, I haven't, I I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, we actually, we actually have a meeting with USA coming up soon to address those pieces. Just to make sure that it doesn't impact the soccer field, because they're going to have to provide us with.
Solution.
Yeah, solutions for those problems.
They assured us it's not going to impact the soccer field, but the way I look at it, I don't know, we are, yeah, but we're going to find out.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll get back to you. The electives, I I don't think it's this year. Gail, maybe you want to talk about the the team and the lunch? I know there's, you know, Gail did a lot of behind the scene work on this, on these team meetings and the lunch schedule, which is like, I don't know. Yeah, please, go ahead, yeah.
The electives, you're correct, that is not for this year because they have already chosen them, okay? That's something to look forward to. The lunches will be shorter by two minutes. Yeah, we actually worked on, met on a team, went through everything and found ways to increase it, because originally it was going to be twenty-five, we managed to get it up to twenty-seven minutes. So it's just two minutes. Principals believe they can handle that with no problem.
Will they be mixed?
No, right now, the plan. No. Right now, the plan is to keep them still sixth, seventh, eighth. That's it? All right. Great.
Okay. Thank you, Gail. Any other public comments? Van Kett?
I think Dr. Alderley already mentioned. Thank you very much. So the brisk pace, those cameras has been arranged. And that would be, you're leading by an example of that, how we can actually keep those cameras in schools. And it took two years for us to get those cameras. So thank you very much for that. And thanks to this entire board for actually approving this expansion of this. I know that things could have been taken care last year, some of them, but still nonetheless, they also supported to an extent. So thanks to this entire board for trying to take this on emergency basis, trying to get the expansion to all the schools. So not to one or two schools. So then I would like to thank Gail for the, providing the alternative to the AB schedule. And it looks like the teachers already mentioned to the students. And some teachers were unhappy that they're losing, especially the science student. Teachers are unhappy that, oh, they're losing five minutes because science teachers need more. But some teachers are happy. So nonetheless, I'm sure that you will hear the noise, but if the majority is happy, I'm sure that it should be. And I, the good thing about it is it's not Gail or somebody doing it. It's all the middle school principals are actually part of it. So that means middle school principal already engaged with their teachers. So it's a combined decision rather than a siloed decision. So thank you, Gail, for taking care of that. And one good news that I got it from Gail, I wrote to her, copied superintendent that about all electives are accelerated electives for next year. If that is the case, you guys are doing a great justice to the people because the GPS are going to be much higher. The only request that I want to ask Gail is to update the program of studies, to mention which one is accelerated, which one is honors. And to my surprise, when I meet lot of eighth graders' parents, 90% of them don't know how the weighted average works, even though it was mentioned. So maybe you guys want to take, create a PPT or a presentation to help people understand how that weighted average works, how you can differentiate yourself by taking a general subject versus accelerated versus honors. So in private schools, they don't care about PAs because my kid goes to private school, he doesn't get any PE score. But they don't even get honors or accelerated different weighted GPA. But the schools explain beautifully to the colleges that the rigor that they are having and the effort they're putting is different. But in our schools, like public school system like us, we have to have that GPA, weighted GPA. So if programs of studies can detail those things, and I also just give you one example, that there is one item called Visual Art 11. There is a prerequisite that middle school teacher recommendation is needed and most of the middle school students are not aware of it. So I think I would reach out to Dr. Valentin and others to help the parents and students understand that. But I think we will help the parents to explain them what the weighted average is, how it impacts and what subjects will help them. Because obviously, if a kid is bad and taking an honors and getting a C is very bad. We would like them to take the regular. So I think with those things that I'm explaining to the parents to the best of possibility, but I sincerely request program of studies could reflect and could be better. And from Mrs. White from the liaison committee last year, Mayor Sam Joshi, I think two years back, he did the internship and there are still kids who didn't get the certificates. We made lot of noise and last two years you were there. So you not only promote that internships, you need to make them held accountable if they don't give the certificates.
I'll talk to them.
Yeah. Tell them that Sam is carrying lot of bad name, not issuing the certificate and he got the work done from the kids when he was council vice president. Then Mayor tried to blackmail you in your last meeting, Mrs. White. It seems he was telling that, oh, I have the place ready. BOE has to come up with plan. In my view, it is his election promise. He better deliver that school to you guys. You don't need to listen, don't follow, don't fail for the blackmail that Mayor is doing. So it is his election promise. He better gives the school. Otherwise, people will look at the next elections that why he made a promise and why he failed. You guys don't need to go and surrender to him. That's my only request to you guys. And electives from the prerequisite perspective, Madam President, and I would like to urge you that students has chosen already electives for next year, but Python and all those things, lot of students are not aware. I don't know how we communicate and remove that Python dependency for learning Java and others. So it's a serious discussions happening with the parents groups. So I certainly want you to see some announcement, at least in the next meeting or after the next meeting, that how the kids can remove the Python dependency to learn Java. So, and overall, you know, I feel that, you know, it's not easy to bring back the AB schedule because we already lost six months and principals are struggling and with the infrastructure upgrades and with the new plan that, parents already texted me that Gail has presented an excellent alternative. So hopefully, you know, the next year, we'll bring back the normalcy. Thank you again.
Thank you, Van Kett. Yes, the Python and Java prerequisites, we, we were going to, we, yeah, we asked to change the program study. Think it will be changed, but I guess the elective program that has not been changed to reflect that. So, yeah, I think we, we should be able to make some kind of announcement to let them know that, that this prerequisite shouldn't be there. And if the kids still want to, they, they would have to talk, you know, they can talk to the counselor to have this addressed, I hope. Yeah. Anything else? Oh, Charlie.
Mr. Ross.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mr. McDonald for a clock. I won't be Jefferson Smith. I won't stay too long. Just have a few items that I want to kind of get into. Not going to be able to make the Tuesday meeting at JP Stevens. We have our National Art Honor Society induction, which has got to do with the art week, the art month that, I believe, Dr. Alderley spoke about earlier. But we got a whole bunch of different things going on at the high and even outside with the wider Edison community. First off, tonight is the opening night of our school musical, which is High School Musical. It's the Disney musical. It's a guaranteed family-friendly show. We've got shows tomorrow night at seven. We've got a two and a six o'clock tomorrow. So make sure that you come out. You can buy the tickets online or you can buy them at the door. But if you've got the little kids, they're going to love this show. They're going to be dancing in the aisles. And luckily for us, East Side High has almost the same colors as Edison. So it looks like we set up the auditorium. Again, that's going to be fantastic. That's going on right now. Next up, in April 23rd, we have the EHS for our PTSO Spring Fling, Flea Market Craft Fair, kind of a little bit of everything. We've been doing it for years. Come out and shop. If you're interested in getting a spot, we still have some spots available. It's ehsptsso@gmail.com. And you can reach out to them about finding what they're selling or just whether the type of things are going to be offered. We usually set it up. Dr. Shalup lets us borrow the, the EELC lot and we kind of set up tables there and in the junior lot. So it's right there. A great day for everybody to come out. And I wanted to talk about one more thing that's going on Saturday. It's a joint effort by the Edison Public Schools community. As president of the EPSA, the principals and supervisors, I'm also joined by ETA members and members of the custodian and maintenance workers. And we do something that's called St. Baldric's and we do it every year. And we get our heads shaved. And so Saturday, I'm going to go out and do the full Eddie and I'm going to get, you know, shaved down again with some members. And if any of the board members or, you know, as we like to say, attorney, if you want to come out, or any of the central office staff wants to come out, anybody that's in this room and comes and shaves their head, I'll personally donate $250.
I only have half a head.
That's.
Doesn't matter?
$125 for you.
It's all that matters.
We're making deals here tonight. But if you'd like to donate to this, we can either go online. I'm going to send something through Patty Time to everybody, or you can donate on the computer tonight at stbaldricks.com. And what is it for? Like every of the great things that we do is for the children and it's to do research on children's cancer. And to me, there's, you know, nothing more precious than the lives and the health of our children. And we all know about Ally, who is our Southside girl that's fighting it right now. And so she's just another example. And I know employees in our district that are childhood cancer survivors and it's, it's a wonderful thing for people to do. And to kind of close out, today I had the honor of going to Rutgers University and seeing somebody in the class of 2012 that me and Mr. Romano met the last time Mr. Romano was on the board, when he was a student at Edison High and he worked with some of the original Eagles to help re-landscape the cherry trees that the first Edison High class donated back in 1960 when they left. And Kevin was an Eagle Scout and was, you know, brought out his friends and tried to understand how to do masonry work, which he had never done before. And today I got to see him do his dissertation defense. And let me just pull up the picture so I can get the name of what he did his study on. And it comes right to what we're talking about with St. Baldric's, that he has been working since doing his BA at Rutgers in the lab. And his dissertation topic was a spontaneous melanoma mouse model applicable for a longitudinal chemotherapy and immunotherapy study. So that he sat and went through this, all of the different things that he did to find out how with melanomas you can find ways to keep them from metastasizing and finding out the impacts on the drugs. And this was a study with mice that went over two years. And he's been doing, supporting other assistants. And this is somebody who got his start in Edison High and in Edison Public Schools. And just tying it in with the St. Baldric's, it's wonderful to see everything and to be, he thanked some of his teachers and some of his guidance counselors, Ms. Amory Lynch, Ms. Laura Skamaka, Dr. Eugene Nasser and Mr. Tom McMahon. And he even threw in, I hope I became what's great about Edison. And I would say he definitely did. So appreciate everybody and any support for St. Baldric's. Be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, for being, always being the most enthusiastic advocate for your school and for your students. Thank you. Anybody else? No? Motion to end the public comments?
I have a motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I need to read this, right? The, okay. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Acts, Chapter 231, PL 1975, we're joined to a confidential session for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, personal matters, health insurance contract dispute, formal staff and students' litigations, legal aspect of land purchase and ETA grievance. Thank you. I don't think we expect ourselves, you know, to come out to the public session. I sound like I said, all in favor?
Did we get a motion in the second?
Oh, Jerry. Joe is motion.
Motion.
Motion and Joe Romano second.
Thank you very much. It's a voice vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
See you guys on Tuesday.
I'll see you guys next Tuesday. Thank you.